Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the planning board meeting of September 24th, 2025. First on the plan is De Cispary, 112 Buxhall Road site plan. Mike, I believe you have some comments?
Yeah, the lot width is still incorrect. The lines are not drawn on the submission. I don't know if you didn't submit the right map or what happened. We discussed it. We went over the whole thing, but I don't see the actual lines on there.
Jack, you gotta use the microphone, please.
Check the lot coverage. It appears to be wrong. Definition provided below.
Vinnie, we need a microphone.
And there are one, two, three, four, four variances definitely needed and two more, or three possibly, once he checks the lot coverage. But the lot width in depth, I can't tell. You put a 93 to 100 feet on the zoning table, it should be a specific number, not a range of numbers.
Wait a second, Jack, you gotta get-
Wait till you get a microphone. He's coming up.
Vinnie's coming.
He's coming right now. And that's all I had.
I can fix that. I mean, it's, but-
But we gotta check it so I can tell you which variances you need, Jack.
Okay. That's why I submitted it, yes.
Thanks, Mike. Richard, comments?
Applicant noted comments. So just a reminder to the board, this is a constructed new single-story 44 by 60-foot garage at 112 Buxhall Road. Noted referral to Maybach Fire Department. Noted town of Cornwall highway permit. He indicates that there's no stormwater permit needed because it's smidgen under the 5,000-square-foot threshold for disturbance. Applicant noted the need for maintenance agreement if necessary and public improvement and engineering fee. Drawings do not show details for stabilized construction entrance must be provided. The amount of fill being brought to the site should be provided. All fill must be certified. The applicant stated no fill will be brought to the site, and that if it is, documentation will be provided. Either it is or it isn't. It's a grading plan. I mean, you're either bringing fill or you're not. Figure that out. Details should be provided on how drainage from the new building will be routed, and typical driver requirements are eight-inch base, three-inch binder, and two-inch top.
Rich, thank you. And Pat?
So one of the primary issues we talked about was what's the building being used for? Jack's clarified that. It's for the plumbing business, storage materials, and servicing their equipment. So that's been clarified. We understand how the building's being used. Mike indicated we have to show the parking spaces to document compliance on the plan, so we need to see that. There was one minor issue which we raised earlier. There's a carport, and then the driveway goes around the carport to get to the garage in the back. It's only 15 feet wide. Ordinarily, for commercial use, we would have a 24-foot to way driveway or something like that. This is a little bit of an unusual use and operation, so you need to determine if the 15-foot is adequate to get to the, to get back and forth around the building. There's no exterior lighting. There is exterior lighting proposed, just tell us about that. I didn't see the illumination levels, so if you could clarify that. And there were some additional render, or elevations provided of the garage, so we know what it kind of looks like. It is in the back. It's probably not very visible, but nevertheless, you are the architectural board, and you should pay some attention to that as you move along.
This, this is the second sheet that shows somebody on the road, and you're not gonna see this building because it's gonna be blocked by the existing building. And as far as that 15-foot, I mean, this is basically a garage for a homeowner. And, you know, they'll, they'll adjust the traffic there, I mean, as opposed to-
Did you say garage for a homeowner?
I thought it was a garage for a business.
It's a home, it's an existing house, residential house, and this garage is for the homeowner. It's for his business.
Business, okay. I just wanna make sure, because if it's for the homeowner, you don't need it. But it's for his business to operate at his home.
Yes.
Got it.
And can we get, refer to the zoning board?
I think we have some more questions for you, Jack.
Okay.
But you also have to give me those numbers before we can refer you anyway.
I can, I'll do that.
You need to finish up Mike's questions, and Rich asked a simple question. Are we bringing in fill or are we not?
No fill.
No fill. That needs to be stated.
Well, that's not what his memo said to us. It says, if there's fill, we will do it. So whether there is or there isn't. He's telling you no now, then that needs to be there. But if they bring in fill, then the board should be aware of that right now.
Put a note on the plot that says there will be no fill brought into the site.
Okay.
I don't believe the planning board's seen any renderings or any. I know, I know exactly where it is. I've been out there. Do you have, okay. That was from the last, okay.
Yeah, not, not very good. I mean, they have to get us better renderings than this.
It's hard. But this, this is the owner, the property owner, Mr. De Cispary. Look at those nice pictures. That, these are the renderings. What?
That's not rendering, that's the-
That's the view from the street.
Where's the building?
Flip it around so we see the building.
The proposed building.
Oh, the back of it's, there you go. That's the building.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. I just- And it is pretty much hidden by the building, but that's basically what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, you gotta remember, you got a property, properties on both sides with gigantic commercial buildings. This is minor compared to that. So can we get a referral to the zoning board?
Any questions from the board?
Who?
Give us a second, Jack.
Okay.
Just came back to the width of the driveway. It was a concern, but, I mean, I'd like to ask, what type of vehicles are gonna be going back there? Is it small vans, pickup trucks, or is it gonna be big, larger box trucks, liftgate trucks?
Use the microphone. Yeah, thank you. State your name.
Hi, I'm Chris De Gasperi, the owner of 112 Buxhall Road. Pretty much have vans, and I do have a box truck, and we do accept deliveries in there with box trucks. We accept. The one thing I am trying to do right now, I have in, with NICE, to try, I have a utility pole that's right on the corner of the driveway at the road, so I'm trying to see if I get that moving. Because that approaches on my driveway. Approaches on, makes an hour right at the roadside, so.
How often do you think the deliveries will be?
I think a couple times a week.
No, not every day.
But I traffic through the same driveway with my work vehicles every day.
So not, yeah.
Yeah, so twice, you know, we're in and out every day. Yeah. And the deliveries, I don't have them on street side. They're back in the driveway. Yeah, and we unload in the driveway, down at the bottom, at the back end.
What's, excuse me, what's the water service for today?
Uh, just for a hose bib, you know.
Okay, not a restroom?
No, no.
Yeah, I believe last time, no restroom.
Yeah, no.
No heat?
No, uh, there will be heat in there. Yeah, because it's gonna be a workshop. I'm gonna, yeah. Honestly, I'm using it for business, and I have no garage there. We haven't had one. So it's gonna be for personal use and business use at the same time, you know. So being I don't have a garage, we only have a carport. So I'm gonna be using it as a garage as well. You know, work on my own fleet, my own personal vehicles. Yeah.
And nothing flammable, right?
I'm sorry?
Nothing flammable?
Nothing flammable. Most of my, there are gonna be some goods because of my stored goods, so there will be-
Yeah, torches.
You know, and then we have vehicles in there too, so I was saying, you know, there will be flammables.
Okay.
He's a plumber too, so that's, left torches and things to breeze with.
Yeah. And my plan is, I have four vehicles, work vehicles now, so two of them I plan on parking inside the garage. I keep two outside. Yeah. That's why I'm trying to get the depth, because if I do any short than 40 feet, I'm not gonna be able to park two vehicles and have plenty of room for storage or inventory.
Is this your color scheme, or is this just a generic?
That's what I'm, I plan on going with that. Yeah. Two-tone gray, yeah. Because I have, one property next to me has blue, the next property next to me, cozy, has a tan building. I figure it is appropriate for me. My vehicles are gray anyway, so.
Any other questions? I imagine lighting across the front elevation, right?
I'm sorry?
Lighting will be across the front elevation?
Across here?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, probably on the overhead doors and at the entrance.
Downward lighting?
On this plan, it shows the circles for the lighting.
Is that a spill plan, Jack? Is that a spill plan? That shows how far the light's gonna go out, or? Use the mic.
Use the microphone.
Use the mic, and you gotta get details on your plans, what kind of lights you're gonna have, where they're gonna be located, which you showed on the drawing, what kind of lights they are, so that when we inspect it later on, we know what lights are there. And you need a spill plan.
Okay.
They come with the lights.
Okay.
Now, it'll tell you what the lumens are and how far they go and all that, so depending on the height you put them.
Jack, I think you have to come back to the board in two weeks with the details that Mike and Rich asked you for, and then we'll, we'll move you along to the zoning board.
Can we send this to the zoning board?
Not until we get the information that Mike and Richard requested.
Okay.
Hey, Jack, have you got any fire department to come out there yet?
The who?
Fire department.
No.
Because you, I believe you proposed that, right?
He said he noted the comment. That doesn't mean they were out there. He noted the comment that they need to be referred to. You might wanna get them out there. Sorry, Mike.
No, I just said, did you send them the application?
No.
Does Rose do that automatically, or is that through? I don't know which way it is. I think Rose does it, so.
I mean, given the use of the, and then the narrowness of the driveway, I'd like to see what they have to say about it.
There's too many things here, I think, to move it forward. We, we don't wanna move anything forward to the zoning board until it's further along, I think. Raise point with the fire departments, with Google. Okay, Jack, see you hopefully in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
The rendering looks good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Hudson Hounds, 212 Union Valley Road. Mike, I believe you had some comments on this.
Yep, same comment. It's now the MDR zoning district. The variance is still required to use variance. Up to 60 dogs are present at the site, including daycare and boarding, I think is what they put on the plan. Couple, actually months ago now, I received a call about people parking on Kiora Boulevard at the entrance to Maple Hill. I guess that's your people. I went out there, and it does, if you come up Union Valley and you make a right onto Kiora, it causes you to almost go over into the oncoming traffic. It's not quite, but it's probably not the best idea or the best spot to park. I mean, it's, it's not the answer, I guess I would say. I didn't receive an updated site plan for this. We just got a survey this time. I don't know if there's a reason that we're not getting a, an actual survey showing all the information. I'm sorry, site plan, not survey. And did a little update. Yeah, because they answered in written comment form, but they didn't, we didn't get the actual map that goes with it, so that was it.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Rich?
So the applicant has provided a response to the various comments I made. They, they noted referrals, they noted the permits, but as referring to the permits, they request, like for stormwater, uh, for stormwater and wetlands, in particular wetlands, the applicant requests that this be made a condition of site plan approval, subsequent to use variance being granted by the zoning board of appeals. We don't normally act that way. We get this information before we refer to the zoning board. So my comment to that is the wetlands and associated buffer must be provided on the plan. They talked about New York City DEP within 100 foot of a wetland course, the course, the water course, they need to discuss that with DEP. I guess once we do a secret declaration, they can go a little further with them. They addressed dog waste issue with Putnam County DOH. ECB for wetlands, same comment. They wanna wait for that to be a site plan approval, and use variance being granted. It gotta be shown on the plan. They're saying that they can't walk on the other people's property, but I mean, they can certainly figure out where wetlands are, and if that's the case, you have to figure out how to get wetlands delineated. Everybody else does it. I don't know why these guys can't do it at this time. They're saying that no work has been proposed with the application, no permit should be required, but any proposed changes to the previous constructed improvements, this is for stormwater, should lie below the threshold of New York State DEC permit requirements, is what they state. They need to provide that level of disturbance that they're planning or not planning on doing. Same with the last comment, you're either bringing in fill or you're not. You're either doing disturbance or you're not, right? And if you are, give a number. Wetland boundary needs to be verified. They will contact the DEC, so they, I don't know if they've done that enough yet. They noted the traffic vehicle maneuvering plans. The, exist in a single, the site exists as a single residential home, which also houses a building. As stated above, we will be seeking relief from commercial vehicle parking. That information needs to be provided on the site plan, which, as Mike mentioned, wasn't provided. Slopes for the, for the driveways need to be provided. Light spill plan needs to be provided. Applicant states the property owner is seeking information on existing lighting installed. It's gotta be provided. Like, a lot of this information is just not on the plan, wasn't provided, and it really should be. They're saying that there's no public improvements for performance bond, but there are. If there's landscaping or stormwater management practices or residential control, those are all things that are required as part of our code to be bonded. So, and they will need to provide that so we can figure out what that number is.
Thank you, Rich. And Pat?
So our issue with this was really getting a handle on how the facility operates. So it's been operating for a while, and the applicants indicated they're not making any changes to it. So a couple of things. So there are facilities in the backyard that have been constructed over time. We asked, are they there legally? Their response was they believe they have permits for everything. Half an answer. We need to know if they have permits for everything, and if the tented structures and so forth are in fact there legally. Believing they are doesn't quite cut it. The whole operation of picking up dogs, delivering them, nobody drives there to pick up or drop off their dogs, is interesting. I'm sure that's how it operates, but there's an off, the times we've been there, there's an awful lot of cars associated with the facility. So are those all employees? Tell us about that. The reason we have to understand how it operates is because we would approve your project conditioned on all of these things, so there can't be any ambiguity about numbers of people working there, all that sort of stuff. That's why we're pressing on these sorts of questions. The tented areas, there was a question of whether they're temporary or not. They'll be there all year long, and apparently they replace them when they get in need of replacement. So those temporary structures are permanent. Richmond mentioned that animal waste. They've indicated it will be collected frequently. We do need to know where that's stored on the site. Is there a dumpster? How that's taken care of? What does frequently mean? That's an example of pinning it down so we can condition the approval on how that operates. One thing I thought was interesting is that we, we were concerned about noise and dog barking. That's often a concern with facilities like that. The applicant has indicated that they screen their dogs prior to becoming clients, so to ensure that noise is not a problem. So you only accept non-barking dogs? I kinda wonder how that actually works, so maybe you could explain that. So really, it's getting a better handle on how the facility operates.
Thank you, Pat. Before I turn it over to the board, why don't you update us on how you operate and the questions that these gentlemen just asked? There's still a lot of open issues.
Yep. So what we were trying-
State your name and please-
Of course, Michael Licori, Hogan Rossam Licori, attorney representing Aaron Posit, who is the owner-
Is that microphone working? It's pretty close there.
Sorry about that, guys. I, I just don't have much of a voice right now, so. Michael Licori, Hogan Rossam Licori, representing Aaron Posit, Aaron is the owner and operator of Hudson Hounds. We've, first, I, I, I thought we actually submitted an updated site plan, so I apologize for that, because we had spent a lot of- Yeah, I see, I see that. I see what went in from, from, from Bibbo for us to middle. We intended on providing a lot of, you know, more information than what we have in front of us.
Try the other one if it's closer to your mouth, maybe, whatever.
No, I'll just, I'll stand closer. Yeah, okay. We, I, I, I thought we had submitted an updated site plan, but obviously that's not the case, so I apologize for that. What we were trying to do was get enough information to the planning board where you might feel comfortable allowing us to start a discussion with the zoning board of appeals. We're at a point where, where the rubber really meets the road. We're gonna start spending a lot of money trying to get the outside approvals or beginning that dialogue, you know, with the DEC and the DEP, which primarily relates from, from what we believe right now is to be a widening of the driveway that, that has occurred to accommodate the parking that exists. So, you know, just from, from, from the comments, it's obvious to me that we don't have enough information for the board, and we will get that and, and get it to you. But what we would like to do is actually start that discussion, because if the use isn't permitted, then we're really, we're wasting your time, we're wasting our time. So, you know, the one distinguishment between, like, you know, the last application and this one is, you know, it's not a number that needs to be determined. It's whether they'd be willing to grant the variance for the use, and that's a pretty high burden. We recognize that. So that, you know, we'll make another submittal. We'll attach the information that's necessary to the best that we can, you know, as far as, you know, moving the project along, getting on the next agenda. Certainly, we'll reach out to the, to the DEC and, and if we haven't already. I, I actually thought Ray contacted the DEC, Ray, Ray Hamel from Bibbo, who's our, our civil engineer. But we'll, we'll certainly move that aspect along. And I, I don't know if there's any, you know, if there's any preclusion from us actually trying a work session with the zoning board unless you guys tell us otherwise.
We, we don't have work sessions with zoning.
Okay.
You get a referral from this board to zoning. That's what I told you in the beginning. You wanted to go directly there. I said, we don't do it that way here. Actually, I think New York State doesn't allow it.
No, there's no prohibition on work session with the zoning board. There's no-
We don't do them, though.
Well, I understand you don't do them. I'm just saying, you said New York State doesn't allow it.
No referral I'm talking about. For, if you need a use variance, this board needs to declare lead agency first, because they are the lead agency, obviously.
Understood. Yeah, we, we have a seat, we have a time, you know, obviously. We'd have to get to leg deck with you guys before we could talk to the zoning board. So, we recognize that.
What about the question of the permits? Can you confirm one way or the other if all permits have been issued or not? I think it was a comment that Pat made earlier.
I, I think the, the issue there is, I, I think there was a misunderstanding about whether a permit was required for a temporary structure, which it would have been. So that answer should have been no. The permits are not there.
Pat, are you, does that answer your?
Yeah, that's exactly what we were looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
So the tents and that's, those structures in the past just emerged?
No, 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 no. That's, that's not, meaning, they did not just emerge. They would have required a permit, had it been done correctly the first time.
Right, right. That's the point.
That's the point.
So they require a permit, you got a permit?
No, they required a permit, and we don't have a permit.
Right. That's my point. So they would construct it without a permit.
Yeah. I, I think the initial confusion was, well, they're temporary. No, they're not temporary. They're, even if they were temporary, your code would have required it.
Turn it over to the board.
Did I understand correctly when you were talking about, you mentioned something about widening the driveway?
Yeah, the existing driveway is different from when the house was constructed. And the widening, so it's wider than the initial construction, and the location of the widening is too close to a DEP regulated setback, and that would have required permits from DEP and then possibly also DEC. There's a question about whether that, you know, where that setback lands in the backyard or the side yard of the property, and if it also includes some of the tented area. I think that is just DEC, not DEP. But that is the, the, my understanding from talking to Ray, that is the issue, the precise issue right now with the, with what has triggered their regulatory review.
Okay, so from what I'm understanding, you're not going to make it wider, which already been-
It's already, yeah, yeah.
And Ray, the wetland they're talking about is off-site. It's the buffer that extends onto this property.
Right, right, yeah. There's, there's really nothing proposed than what is shown. But, look, you know, it's obvious, if we showed up here with a blank slate, we'd be getting your approval first for everything that's shown on the plan. That, that's not the case here.
So, so what happens with the driveway if you don't get what you need from DEC or DEP?
So, you know, the, the alternative is, there are alternatives to what, what is there to asphalt. There would be pervious pavement. That's an acceptable use, so it would have to be replaced with the pervious pavement. It's not, it's not-
Well, just to be clear, that's an alternative that the DEC may allow a permit for. The alternative is they deny the permit and remove the driveway.
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
And that then may trigger the 5,000-square-foot threshold, which then creates a stormwater, you know, need for stormwater permitting through the state. So, you know, there's a lot of, once you start pulling the threads of things that have been built without permission, right, without any permits, you know, so maybe they don't need to go to DEC, but they might have to go to ECB on the grand scheme of things to get those permissions at this point in time. But they do need to talk to the DEC and figure this out.
I, I was there yesterday, and I parked, and it, it's quite tight when the entire parking lot is being used. So if you end up with a situation where you've gotta pare back the driveway because you're not getting the approval you want, I'm not seeing how it works. I mean, it-
Yeah, we, we really have to-
It's a gating issue, is what I'm saying.
Is there something that should be cleared up before they're here in front of us?
No, I think it has to be resolved before you, it has to be resolved before you announce the declarations.
That's a threshold issue.
Okay.
And the negative declaration has to be in place before they can go to the zoning board to get the use variance.
Yeah, it's a real, we're, we're in a pickle here, you know?
Yeah.
So we were, that's why I was looking to see if there was any possibility I could start that discussion, because if they told us to take a hike, then we know. But, but, but look, if, if, you know- But, but, but look, if, you know, the law is the law, if that's the procedure, then we'll do what we have to do.
Previously, when you were here, you were mentioning about other business opportunities that you were looking into in the adjacent areas? Is anything-
Yeah, we, we have, we have located another property. Unfortunately, the, we're, we're sort of in, we have a real issue, which is, the business needs to operate to finish what we're doing on that other property, to make that a reality. And so we're trying to get to that point. So we really, you know, I have to continue forward, we have a court proceeding that is in place, and certainly if we're not making an effort to get approvals, then, you know, we'll suffer that consequence. So we are, you know, we kind of have our foot on the gas in two different places at the same time. And, you know, if an opportunity presents itself where we didn't have to do that, we would, you know, we'd stop doing one or the other.
Do you think you'll make any progress in the next couple of weeks?
If we can get that wetland delineated, then yes. Then much of our questions, much of your consultant's questions will be answered.
Any thoughts from the board?
There's a lot of questions. There's a lot of open, open issues.
Would you mind just for the board, for the public, just, how's, what's the day-in and day-out operation like at your facility?
Aaron Posit, owner of Hudson Hounds, Inc., at 202 Union Valley Road. So, I'll do it from the busiest day of the week, right, because that's going to have the most of everything. So that's usually on Wednesdays. We have pretty much a max of 60 dogs coming to the facility. It's four vans plus a Jeep go out in the morning, 8 o'clock, my employees arrive, four employees, four vans, they park their cars, they take the four vans that are already parked there, they go and pick up their dogs on their route. Another employee comes and picks up the Jeep, they go pick up local dogs, and their car is there as well. They're all arriving back at the facility anywhere in between 10:15 and 11:00 in the morning. They park, we unload the dogs. Some of you have come to the property and have seen, it's divided up into 11 different sections. There's anywhere from 10 to 15 dogs per section with at least one staff member maintaining those dogs in each section. We run the daycare from 11:00 to 2:00. It's mostly outside, but we do utilize the inside with inclement weather, we'll do one to two groups rotating throughout those three hours. The daycare itself runs from 11:00 till 2:00 in the afternoon. At 2:00, we load up all the vans, back up with those dogs, and they're all going back home. Vans arrive back around anywhere from 4:30 to 5:00. They clean their vans, and then they park them, get in their cars, and they go home for the day. The other staff members that we have, manager, myself, as well as two other employees who come in in the morning and do setup for the yards, and they also break down the yards at the end of the day. They're usually there from 9:00 to anywhere from 3:00 to 4:30, depending on what needs to be cleaned and what needs to be done. Yes, there are times where there are more cars than there should be, and that is because I'm training new staff members, so there are a lot of, there are a lot of cars, but that is not normally the case. It is usually the four vans, my Jeep, which is usually parked in the garage, four staff members, well, six staff members plus the manager, and that's on a Wednesday. Every other day is either one to two, or even three employees less on any other given day. Saturdays and Sundays, there's only one van that goes out, so there's only three employees for Saturdays and Sundays. At night, there's nobody there. It's one, either myself or another employee, and they're watching the dogs that are boarding for the evening. So if you were to drive by after 4:00 or 5:00, you would not see all those cars there, and it never will be, because we don't run the daycare hours past 2:00. As far as, I'm sorry, Mike's concern is with Keora, it was something that we were trying, because there were no signs up there in the beginning, so I had a couple of the employees park up there. The cop, the police did come and tell me that there was a complaint about it, I was like, there was no signs, if you tell me I can't park there, I can't park there. They drove up there, they came back and told me it was fine. They put up their own cones, saying, "Don't park too close to the corner where the, where you actually turn on from Union Valley." That's what we were practicing, but obviously, the people that are living there do not appreciate that, and we have since stopped doing that. I understand it's coming and going, and there's a lot of going on, but that's why we don't allow clients to pick up and drop off, because that would be way too much commotion, and it's a busy street, so. But overall, that is a day. For the boarding, when the dogs are actually staying overnight, we use one section, it's right outside of the house, that's where they are allowed to play, they're not roaming the entire rest of the yard, there's lighting just in that particular tented area, the lights shine down, they don't shine out, because they're underneath the tents itself. And they're basically in and out from basically 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, at 11:00 PM, that is it, they go to bed, they're inside, no one sleeps outside, no one hangs out outside. I go to bed, I live there. And then I'm pretty much up the next morning, anywhere in between 5:30 and 6:30 in the morning, letting them out, feeding them, and then the day starts up.
If I go there with my dog, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to start you, if I go there with my dog, I pull in your driveway, drop my dog off?
No. No, no clients come to my house to pick up or drop off the dog. We, so the trial process that we go through, we do a meet and greet, which is, we come to your house and meet you and your dog, we do an evaluation there in your house, because we're going to be coming in and out of your house. Then the next day, we're coming, picking your dog up in the morning, they come to the daycare, we do a trial where they meet every single dog individually, not thrown in with 100 dogs. We're looking for very specific things, separation anxiety, aggression, there's multiple points that we look for. But we basically introduce that dog to every single dog that's in that group for that day, they get back in the car, they go home, get dropped off at your home. Next day, they do the same thing, only they stay over for the night, and we do a boarding trial as well. Then the next day, they do the same trial again.
And you don't have 100 dogs, you just said 100?
Yeah, no, I don't have 100 dogs. No, 60 on Wednesdays, 60 is pretty much the cap, that's all, that's my height. I've been that way for a couple of years now, and it's only one day a week that we're actually at that point. Wednesday's usually being the middle of the week, and that's what most people want their dog to be out of the house for. But we do that trial program, we have told people, no, sorry, your dog is not going to be, is not going to do well here. We also don't take boarding-only clients, so you have to understand that, so like, places like Potestically Pat-tastic, Dogtopias, they'll take dog boarding-only clients, which means they don't come for the daycare. So they could come once a year just for staying over, or they could come once a month to stay for a week or a weekend, whatever it may be. We don't do that. You have to join the daycare in order to use our boarding services, and a lot of that reasoning is because we want the dogs to actually know each other before they stay at my house for long-term periods, whether it be a night or a week. So I actually tell a lot of people no, because that's mainly what people are looking for, they don't want to spend the extra money on daycare or anything like that, they're looking for like, oh, I'm going away for a week and I just need my dog to go somewhere, we don't do that. You have to be part of the pack. So it keeps our numbers low, plus the pick-up and drop-off. I got four vans in my Jeep, I don't need 15 vans going out, like, this is what suits, in my opinion, sorry, what suits my property and what I can handle, right? If I keep on buying more vans and keep on getting more dogs, it will be a complete fiasco. But that is also why we have been trying to find another property, because I know that my property cannot grow past that. We do a very good business, I could give you letters from every single one of my clients, they'll say we, they love us and all that good stuff, but I'm not going to sacrifice the service of the dogs and my clients just to make a couple of extra bucks. It's just, I don't need to. I have, it's a pretty good business, I do pretty well with it, and I enjoy it. I'd like to keep doing it.
Any restriction on height or weight of the dog? We have all different breeds, doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter, they go through the trials, they have to be neutered, they have to have all three of the New York State required vaccinations, and we probably harp on our clients more than their vet does about their vaccinations, because it's literally the number one thing that New York State only cares about when it comes to dog businesses. But I've got ginormous dogs that are the sweetest that can be, and I've got, I've had small critters that are not very nice. But that's what the trial period is for, is to gauge, to see if they're going to actually do well. And yes, some dogs eventually don't fit the pack, and I literally just told the client that, I'm sorry, I can't take your dog anymore, it's showing way too much aggression, you need to see a behaviorist. I'm not looking, I'm there all the time, this is what I do. I'm not looking to make it any harder for myself or for my clients, I want it to be a safe environment, it's why we clean the place as much as we do, it's why we keep the low amount and quantity down, and why we have as much staff. I wish I had more parking, because you do need the staff, and I feel that a lot of other places don't hire enough people for the amount of dogs that they bring, that they have in their care.
Could you go back and clarify the search for the other property and how it relates to this application? What happens if you get the other property, what happens if you don't?
In a perfect world, if I get the other property and I'm able to set it up, I'm going to move the majority of my clients over there, I'd like to build a little bit more of a local business at the current home. I don't necessarily need it to be where it's at now, I just kind of took it and ran with it, and I'm good at what I do, and I built up a good business, but I don't necessarily think that that house needs to have the amount of business that we're doing now, but for me to get a much bigger property, I kind of need to have some sort of business to sustain both places, right?
So would, if you get the new property, this business would coexist with that?
It would coexist with it, yes. I would like it to, that's really up to all of you.
Any other comments?
Thank you for the breakdown.
That was a good overview. So look, I do think we need a couple more weeks on this, we need the updated site plan. You know, there's currently 60 dogs in an area that's not permitted for this, asking for use variance is a big ask. If we're going to do that, I think we need to cross some Ts and dots and Mi's more, otherwise you get rejected. Clear up the questions from Rich and Mike?
Yeah, I think we know what to do, so, we'll get it done.
Because I'm actually curious of what the public's going to say, right?
Certainly, yeah.
But we're just a little step away from that yet.
Yeah.
What's that, Mike?
No public hearing here until after zoning, okay.
No, no, we're going to hold it over, there's too many on the answer questions.
It would be after the zoning.
Yes, it would be, yes.
Yeah, essentially, I mean, if we achieve obtaining a neg deck, the zoning board would be the first recipient of any public comment before it would come back here.
We're just not ready to send it to the zoning yet.
Yeah, understood, and we'll-
To me, open-
Yeah, we'll get our stuff together with the DEP and DEC and get back to you guys.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I just, one more thing. I know a couple of you have come over and saw, seen the place, but I really do invite all of you to be able to stop by. Hours between 11:00 and 2:00, that's where you're going to see the action, and you can see it for yourself, because you got to see it to believe it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Knights of Columbus, 10 Fair Street.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I might have to recuse myself from the instant matter.
John, you can step outside, please, thank you. Mike, I believe you had some comments?
They got one, two, three, four, five, seven variances from the zoning board of appeals back in May of 2024. We changed the code since then, it did change the lot coverage allowance and the definition, but they're not changing anything, they are on the existing paved area, so there's no reason to get another variance for that, so they are good as far as zoning goes.
Okay, and Rich?
They've essentially addressed all my comments, I, they don't need the permit for stormwater, they're under the threshold, they don't need a maintenance agreement, and there won't be any public improvements, so no need for engineering fee or performance.
And Pat?
And the only issue was, was unclear if there was a retaining wall that was required, it's clear that that is not required in this instance, so there really aren't any site planning issues with respect to this.
Would you please run us through the project, the 800 square foot addition?
Sure. My phone.
And, and I'm sorry, state your name.
My name is-
Lower.
Hurt my ears. My name is Anthony Falco, I'm the representative for 6318 Associates, the legal arm of the Knights of Columbus of Carmel, New York. And basically, we are expanding our building because we are at max capacity. We house the Knights of Columbus, we house the Fraternal Order of Police also, we donate our hall out to various local organizations such as Best Buddies, the Carmel Football Team hosts dinners there for pasta nights and things like that, some of you guys might have attended some of those with your children or as football players. So the general idea is to expand the building and allow us to give back to our community in a better way. We are at a max capacity, we can only hold about 100 people in there, and when we do fundraisers for various organizations, we're cutting them off short and not able to provide the best outcome that we could.
How many people now will this permit you to hold?
Should be able to at least get another 50 people into the building. Parking is not an issue, because we have an easement agreement with the county, we have the full use of their parking lot during off-hours.
Any questions?
This being the Knights of Columbus and being a charity organization, it is going to take us time to build this, and I think that you guys are aware that this is going to be done in stages.
Any questions? You have a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Thank you.
Excellent. I would ask that if you guys would prepare the agreement, a tentative agreement for that, that hearing?
Pat can do that in parallel to us scheduling.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, have a great day.
You too.
That's okay, thanks.
Next on the agenda is GNF subdivision, gates, gateways and fairways, subdivision lot six, gateway for a bond reduction. Mike, I don't believe you had any comments on this, right?
I do not.
And Rich?
So the applicant made a request for the bond reduction on the site, this is lot six. I visited the site multiple times, but on September 17th, most particularly to review for this particular bond reduction. The original bond amount posted and which is currently being held is $2.9 million. The applicant had provided breakdown of the items completed and the items that remain outstanding. The remaining work totals about $539,000, that includes $289,000 for the items mentioned on the performance bond, plus about $250,000 for top quote, which was unidentified on the original performance bond, but the applicant's aware that it needs to be done. We have no objection to the submittal that they provided to us, we're not allowed to, we don't typically lower it below 20%, and the amount remaining is lower than that 20%. So the reduction would be for $2.34 million, leaving a balance of $585,000, which is 20%. 20%. Just so the board is aware, all the infrastructure and, you know, exception of planting, which is what's remaining here in the top coat, the infrastructure is there, that was essentially, that was noted on the performance bond, it was drainage, it was water, sewer, it's all there, right? So has it been connected? No, because I haven't built all the houses, but that's not what we do with the performance bond, so that's why they're here asking for that reduction. So I recommend it to 585, $585,000.
Thank you, Rich, and Pat, no comments from you, correct? Do you have a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, gateways and fairways, Lot 7, bond reduction. Rich, I'll turn it over to you, since Mike and Pat have no comments.
So similarly, similarly, the applicant requested a bond reduction, I was out there on September 17th, the original bond posted, which is currently held at $2.87, $2.8 million, they provided the breakdown, there's about $1.9 million remaining of work to be done, no objection to the breakdown that they submitted, there's a bond reduction then of $976,000, it's in the memo, to the exact number, leaving a balance of about $1.9 million for the remaining work that's there. So this project, this side 7, is not as far along as the other side is, so.
No comments, correct? Then I'll need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I will make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Last on the agenda is T C Graphics, 893 Route 6, waiver of site plan application. Mike, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, the applicant wants to rent a small portion of his commercial building and allow the parking of four, four spaces for the sale of vehicles. Sale of vehicles is permitted use in the Corridor Business Zoning District, have no objection to the waiver provided, it's conditioned that it's only for four vehicles, any more than that, they should come in front of the board for a full site plan showing a, that they comply with the, all the requirements of a used car dealership or a car dealership.
And Rich?
So the, as Mike mentioned, this is a for waiver, they've identified, they identified to rent out six, six parking spaces and rent about 169 square foot of existing building. It's unclear from the information provided if any site work is being performed, I did perform a site visit, there is an asphalt driveway with no parking spaces outlined in there, and there's an area for the, for the six rental spaces as item for driveway, which is down a slope. There's some information that should be provided on this waiver at least, the conformity and adequacy of onsite parking and loading facility signs and number of employees. I don't have an objection to the waiver, it's just they need a little more detail to what's going to be done on the site. And again, as Mike mentioned, there is site work being done, it might be a different animal that we're dealing with, but right now, there's no objection to the waiver.
Is it four or six vehicles?
If there was four in the required one, would be five, is it not?
I, I have it at six, six rental spaces.
Maybe this chairman can clarify. Please state your name.
Tim Conlon.
Is it four or six parking spaces we're talking about here?
Well, the person would only have a total of, at any time, allowed only five vehicles.
Five vehicles?
Yeah, and we have 14 parking spots. And me and my wife are the only one that uses two of them, so.
Yeah, but this is for the parking
And even my customers, so it's not, it's an, it's an online
No, but those are required.
Kind of, he sells the vehicle, and all the people do is come and pick it up. It's not like a normal, like, there's no story.
Why don't you give us an overview, where you're trying, you just mentioned a few things, 14 parking spaces, just give us an overview of what you're planning to do, the business you run, and so on.
Change nothing, just renting a guy that wants to sell his trucks online.
All right, so you're not, you're not the ones on your
I'm the owner of the building.
Right.
And I have my business in there for 35 years, and I've had other people rent there, but they've just been graphic and other people. So this guy just wants to, he needs for D M V, have an actual physical location, he can't do it out of his home. So he came to us and said, "Can we rent and sell out of here?"
Five, five spaces?
Yeah, because it's not that big to allow for like, tons and, you know.
And it is five on the plan? There were four trucks shown in the spots, that's where I got.
Okay, the plan shows five, that's good. Questions from, from anybody?
Where, where on the property are the five vehicles going to go?
One goes up above, because that's just the one truck that would ever be sold and moved at the time, and the rest are down back storage.
Okay, so I'm a little confused, is it trucks or cars?
They're, they're trucks, they're mini trucks, they're the tiny Azuzu trucks.
The size of a car, they fit in the parking spot.
And they usually don't even have back storage. It's, he's not a mechanic, he's not doing work on them, there's no
So he's just selling cars from that property? Will he be there on site all the time, or just when he's making a sale?
When he sells it, yeah.
He's a broker.
Oh, he's a broker.
He's just a broker, so it's almost like internet sales, and then they go there to pick up the thing.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Just for D M V, they require you have a physical, real business, not a home, and then they can grant you the license to sell it, and then all he gets is a file cabinet with a lock and, and the little tags that he can give you.
Works for him.
But he can't do it legally until he has a spot.
And is that spot you're referring to, I see in a diagram, is that in the back of your business?
It's that little small square.
That says rental, 13 by 13?
Yep, that would be his space, and he won't even really be there, because he's always home on the internet selling, he only would come there to do the deal. So it might be once a week or once a month? He only sends, sells like 10 a year right now.
Little niche business?
Yeah.
If you have other comments, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, what does that mean?
That means you can proceed, you can talk to, we have to have a public hearing in two weeks, you can follow up with Rose, make sure you're on the agenda in two weeks.
Okay.
That's, we want to hear from the neighbors.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I know them all for the last, they, they would rent spots there too, if they wanted to.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, good night.
Thank you. Motion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good evening.